It's just like grandma.
Exactly.
I tried to click on it. But I think they're just PDFs. When you open a PDF on your phone, I cannot mine. Yeah, because I clicked on the minutes from my computer network, but it's probably.
Well, that was pretty close.
Stainless steel, please.
This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called disorder. We have roll call, please.
Chair President Bennett.
I'm present.
Commissioner Holman.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Sandberg.
Here.
We'll now have a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a different agenda order this night. Tonight, we are going to take up our appointment of the applicant to fill the commission seat. And I thought I would read how the process goes. The first part of the process will be an open floor for nominations. Nominations will be requested, and if there's a nomination. And the second, the nomination will then be part of the process. If there is a nomination and not a second, that nomination will fail. But here's there are no more nominations from the from the commission that will declare that the nomination is closed. Or as an alternative above, be the member of the body of the commission to make a motion to close nominations. If the motion to close nomination is seconded, it will require a two to three vote, two thirds vote to pass. We'll then have discussion from the body of the commission and public comment. And then the vote will commence on the nominations that are motioned and seconded. If for some reason, the nominee receives three votes, we can then reconvene, what's the proper term? Reconsider the motion tonight by a two thirds vote. Is that correct, Mr. President?
Well, I, you may not, you may not have the updated version of the outline that I gave you. But if there's a two-two vote, say there's two nominations and each one of those nominees gets two votes. What Robert's Rules says is that you keep voting until somebody gets a majority.
That's right.
And that's to prevent the situation where, especially in this case, where we have 30 days to fill the seat, we don't want to have to start the entire process over and go through applications and interviews. We need to get this seat filled. So like I said, the city doesn't use, generally use Robert's Rules, but our ordinances do not provide guidance in this situation. So what I did is I looked to Robert's Rules and then I looked to how other governing bodies have handled this type of situation. And the consensus was that if you have two nominees, the vote is tied, you vote until somebody gets a majority.
Okay, got it. All right, Lisa, if that's the case, I'll publicly randomly select the order of them. It won't be the first time.
Okay.
But if we get any in that position, I'll ask for more random structure.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, clarifications from the commission on the procedure?
I'll take questions.
Mr. Holman.
So we could go on and on forever?
No, I think if it went on and on forever, we would just have to say, we'll start over.
Okay.
With the fact in mind that we will then not meet the 30 day deadline that's called out in the Montana statutes. I mean, that's, if we can't come to a decision, there's no way we can meet that 30 day deadline. But that's the, the vote will be in, so to speak, so.
And we can't go to executive if we come to a standstill?
No, it's a public process and you need to have the discussion in front of the public.
All right, any points, other points of clarification on the commission? Any points of clarification from the participants? All right, so the floor is now open for nominations for the, to fill the city commission seat. Do I have any nominations?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I nominate Quentin Schwartz.
Any nomination for Quentin Schwartz? Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, okay. Is there any other nominations from the floor? Close nominations?
You can close nominations.
Okay, so there are no other nominations, I am closing the nominations for the floor unless there is a motion from the commission. Is it acceptable that I close the nominations? Okay, so no further nominations, may we have roll call, please?
Chair President Bennett.
Yes?
Commissioner Holman?
Yes?
Do you want to say, do you want to say public comment at all? I mean, I know there's only one choice, but.
Is there any public comment? Public comments closed, roll call, please.
Can we have comment?
Yes, certainly.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I was very pleased with all applicants and it's difficult to come to a decision of who to fill the seat, but I felt really good, we need the interview process, now that I can, or be very happy with anyone for appointments, so I was just very pleased with the candidates that we had.
Very much. Sorry about, thank you for it.
Sure.
Is there any other commission comments? There we have roll call, please, start from the beginning again.
Okay, Chair President Bennett.
Yes?
Commissioner Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandberg?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, so the next order of business is Mr. Quentin Schwartz. You're about to come up to the front and get sworn in. So then you can get back here and get sworn out.
Raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I, Quentin Schwartz.
I, Quentin Schwartz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge the duties.
Of my office as city commissioner.
As my office and city commissioner.
For the city of Livingston.
For the city of Livingston.
Park County, Montana.
Park County, Montana.
With fidelity so help me God.
With fidelity so help me God. Thank you, sir.
I thank you all the candidates, David, Tricia, for applying and going through the whole process. Truly appreciate it. All right, so since we do have a new commissioner, we will now again have roll call, a new roll call to be put into record.
Chair President Bennett.
I'm present.
Commissioner Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Schwartz, Schwartz, thank you.
Should we put the G in?
Commissioner Sandberg.
Okay. Our first order of business are consent items. Consent items are items that are placed into this particular category usually because there's not, there's usually no discussion. They're there for the process of approving bills that the city does have or appointments to boards or items that normally are pretty procedural. So there's usually no discussion items. Discussing consent unless the commissioner requests that one of the consent items is. Maybe we'll discuss that again. So there is any, is there a motion on the consent item?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, make the motion, we approve consent items.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So a motion by Freeman, second by Holman, roll call, please.
Chair President Bennett.
Sorry, oh, did you?
I do not want to pull, I just want a clarification.
Okay.
The difference between approval, approval of claims as opposed to ratifying of claims. I may ask, Chair. Ratifying of claims indicate that we had paid a claim prior to the standard approval process either because of timeliness or some other special consideration. Or these two claims that are unratified, they're actually payroll payments to two of our teenagers who work skate night and other rec programs that I opted to pay, but that is really the only difference. Thank you, thank you.
Any other points of clarification? Okay, roll call.
Chair President Bennett.
Yes?
Commissioner Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Or?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Tonight, there are no proclamations, there are no scheduled public comments, no public hearings. There are no ordinances. There is, however, one resolution. And that is Resolution Number 4634, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign facilities and real property use agreement with Livingston Baseball Association. Ms. Lowey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This resolution concerns an agreement specifically with Livingston Baseball Association. These agreements will be templated following the various sports organizations and other organizations that utilize city fields. And it just really gets to delineating who does what, whose responsibilities are what. There's also a hold harmless in there for the city from a liability perspective. This is the first of the many groups and organizations that we will be working with to do this, to provide continuity across all of the organizations that utilize our city fields. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Is there, start off with a motion from the commission? Resolution 4634.
I make a motion for a resolution, please.
Second.
So a motion by Holman, second by Freeman. Is there any commission discussion or clarification on this particular resolution?
Is there any change, any event or et cetera? Or was it just a simple policy cleanup, standardization?
General policy cleanup and standardization, we have a number of organizations that we work with and wanted to get everyone on the same page, so to speak, with what expectations were. Thank you.
Any other points of clarification? Questions from the commission? There's any public comment? Public comment on our resolution to approve our remit between Livingston Baseball Association and City of Livingston? Okay, there are none, will we have roll call, please?
Chair President Bennett.
Yes?
Commissioner Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandberg?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to action items. Action item A, discuss approved deny city's purchase of property from Durden's LLC and request for authorization to allow city manager to sign necessary closing documents. Ms. Lowey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is related to the closing, which is scheduled for February 10th. In relation to the property, we know is the Durden property, which is related to the underpass project. At this juncture, I would like to bring a couple lands to the commission's intention that have come to the intention of administration very recently with regards to the underpass project. As you know, this project has been funded by both the federal earmark in the amount approximately $918,000 as well as no levies in the amount approximately $650,000. To date, to all of the primary engineering, environmental impact studies, engineering related to the overpass, underpass discussion, as well as other related expenses, we have expended all the roughly $150,000 of both the federal money and the levy. So the money that remains is in the levy fund. We are at this point 99% complete with the engineering for the project in its entirety. The purchase of this property is purchase of right of way necessary to construct the underpass. On January 21st, the certain, certain members of leadership team had a meeting with MDT to discuss the overall status of this project. At that meeting, we were informed by MDT that there is a 10 year time limit on the federal fund. This is something that we were, prior to that meeting, unaware of. The terms of that repayment specify that if we are not fully funded for the project and ready for construction, within 10 years, we are obligated to pay back the federal monies that have been expended, which total approximately the $918,000. So at this point, funding of this project is obviously dependent on grant funding or the option of the general obligation bonds to the community. And we both have been discussed at length in various settings as mechanisms for funding this project. Right now, the payback may be required in the following circumstances. We do not have the funding secured by 2021. The city decides to abandon the project in its entirety. At that point, repayment of $918,000 is required within 30 days of notice of closing the project. If the city decides to proceed with an alternative plan such as a crossing or an overpass, we are required to pay back those federal funds because the federal funds are specifically designated an underpass. Extensions of this guideline of this deadline are possible, but I cannot guarantee with any assurance that we would be granted an extension if we ask. I feel it's important that everyone know these facts, so we have the background of the project in its entirety. At this point, it is still the administration's recommendation to move forward with this purchase in light of several factors. The purchase of the, of the property further demonstrates our local commitment to this project and our commitment to bringing it forward to completion. We also will end up with a tangible asset out of this purchase that should, for some reason, the underpass not reach conclusion or reality. We have a tangible asset that we have the ability to either sell, develop ourselves, rent, or utilize as a city asset for housing in city department or something of that nature. Regardless of the timing, this right of way is a requirement to do the underpass. So if we do not move forward with purchasing and that property is developed, all that does is escalate our costs because this is the only property that meets the need of the underpass. And it is also the only location feasible for the underpass. So at this point, again, for those reasons, it is the administration's recommendation that we move forward with the prior commitments we have made to purchase this property. And then begin looking at aggressive ways to meet the remaining five years of that deadline. Questions? After that, no.
Commissioner Holman?
You said, so we abandon the project and have to pay back. Did you say the $918,000 or did you say $913,000?
Nine, it's approximately $918,000, it's a little over that, but.
I thought there was a $5,000 difference in that I did catch, so, okay. And if we need an extension, do you have any information on that?
We have the option of attempting to file for an extension and asking for one. Again, there is no guarantee whether that would be granted. Failure to meet the funding requirement is not eligible for an extension. One of the things that would potentially grant us an extension is when public involvement in a process has either delayed or prolonged that process. So we did lose some time with regards to the overpass, underpass discussion. That may be an avenue for having an extension granted, but again, there are no guarantees that we would be granted one.
One last question.
Sure.
The funding has to be completed by that time for the project.
The funding has to be secured in its entirety. And at this point, that is approximately $45 million that is inclusive infrastructure, relocates for utilities, as well as the overall construction of the project and updating of the environmental impact studies, which will need to be updated at this point. Thank you.
Before, can I have one question? Is it my, is it my understanding that we have to pay back the no levy as well?
My understanding is we would have to pay back any unexpended funds within the no levy.
Unexpend.
So is it that this issue of paying the funds back just came to light recently? And my question would be, why was this not disclosed and discussed at the time, five years ago, when we secured the funding?
The conversation with MDT and the leadership team, as it currently stands, occurred on January 21st of this year. I cannot speak to the prior administration.
But I would clearly state then, if they're saying they have to pay it back, there's something in the information that we signed to get that grant that stated these type of disclosures as far as faulting to be back the funds.
Most of all of the documentation that is both housed here as well as the complete file from the engineers, has not provided any documentation that specified a 10 year time limit.
And so then how is that, Mr. Code, that they can make that declaration at this point?
So there are really two relationships going on here. The state, MDT, is receiving funds from the federal government. The Code of Federal Regulations and the United States Code say, state, if you're going to take this money and divvy it up within your state to certain projects, you're required to repay that money to the federal government within 10 years. That deadline set forth in the CFR and in the United States Code. Then there's a second relationship that the city of Livingston has with MDT. And we have an agreement with them that says if we abandon the project or we terminate our agreement with MDT to go forward with the project, we will be responsible for paying back the funds expended. Now, the contract between MDT and the city of Livingston, I don't see that there's a 10 year time period in there. It's not called out in the contract. But MDT is convinced, and they told us, you have 10 years. But our review of the documentation, the stuff that's been approved by the city commission, doesn't show that 10, 10 year time window. And I don't, I can't really speak to this, but I think Lisa has requested from MDT, can you show me a specific document where the city has agreed to repay these funds in 10 years? And each time, they just send us the CFR and the United States Code. So that's where we're at. What we know is that MDT is expecting us to repay the funds in 10 years unless we get an extension, if the budget doesn't come to fruition.
So how do we get a clarification on that?
That's a good question, because like I said, none of the documents we have say 10 years. None of the documents that we've signed, the commission and the city manager have signed with MDT say 10 years. But, you know, MDT did indicate to us that they're in this vote with us and they're going to do what they can to help the city out because they want to see the project move to completion. So I think at the end of the day, unfortunately, clarification on the 10 year issue, I hope it doesn't end up in court, but to me, it doesn't seem like we're bound. None of the documents I've seen say that we're bound to repay in 10 years. But I think we should plan for that contingency. And we should act as if that, that's, that that one is there.
I'm just one voice in the commission that I would like to see. I think it's important that we continue the clarification because there's a lot of moving parts in this project. One of them being, I think, a couple of months ago, when the commission voted to go into the agreement to buy the Durbin property. As the community member, I specifically asked if there had been any communications with the adjacent property owner that you would need a construction easement with. And all of the commissioners informed me that there had been no communication with the adjacent property owner. Yet I have a letter that was written by the adjacent property owner, addressed to the commission from March 2014 stating that they will not give you that construction easement. So it bothers me a little bit that that information was not shared when I asked the question a couple of months ago. But moving forward, again, another moving part, we're taking again the risk of public money again into a project that you have no guaranteed funding, no guarantee that you know that's going to happen, and investing in a piece of property that, yes, it may be tangible. Is it a fair market value? I'm not sure. Can you sell it for what you purchased it for? I'm not sure. I just don't think that the city commission is in the role of speculating on real estate. And I think until the commission has the ducks in a row to understand and a communication to all parties that would be involved in this, we shouldn't be expending public money on speculation.
No, one clarification. Which letter are you referring to? Are you referring to Mr. Voyage's letter?
Yeah, from, yeah, Dan Voyage. That was written to the commission on March 14th, 2014.
I think we had some discussion about that at a previous commission. You weren't city attorney and you weren't city manager. That, that's in reference to, they wouldn't sell a construction easement or buy.
Sell, they wouldn't provide.
Buy the construction easement for the city that they developed an underpass.
Correct. You cannot use their property. To me, I think that's a vital component. If that's where you're going to place an overpass or an underpass.
I think at the time, and correctly if I'm wrong, I just want to address this because I think that's an important point. I think at the time, we did have that discussion with the city commission. And any commissioner who was there at the time, please chime in if you remember this. Was that, that the city did have some negotiations in process with Mr. Voyage. And the other thing is that there wasn't any permanent use of that, it was a construction easement. And my understanding was that, correct me if I'm wrong on this point, this legal point, that we could use, if we had to, we could do some legal... What's the right word? I don't want to say taking.
The power of eminent domain.
Power of eminent domain for the use of a construction easement. So those were some of the things that were.
I understand. The, the letter addresses that, that you would be in litigation if you tried to do that. And personally, as a commissioner, I don't think that that's an appropriate neighborly, community involvement way to do business is to claim eminent domain.
I'm just providing information so you know what this is.
I understand that and I'm just providing my opinion of why I don't think eminent domain is, and the letter just addressed stating that the city will be in litigation.
Is there any further commission discussion? More other commission discussion comments? On the, on the information provided by the city manager and about the discussion item A, which we're on opposing that property. I think also we need to, Mr. Code, I think we need to inform the commission. If we decide not to move on this property, what is our liability?
So the way the contract is written, there's a provision that says if the city does not close on the property, fails to close on the property, the seller will keep the city's deposit, which in this case is $2,500.
So if no other commissioner has comments, I would like to hear some public comment. I do have comments myself, but public comment be fine. If you have public comment, please come up, state your name and address for the record, sign in, provide your public comment.
My name is Steve Coats, 1007 Eagle Park.
Are you being picked up? Can you tap the microphone? Can you hear him in back?
Yes, he wants to.
Okay.
My name is Steve Coats, 1007 Eagle Park. And I do have a question as, as well as a comment. And, but I think you mentioned the only piece of real estate required would be the one that you're talking about here tonight. And then which property you indicated that that was more of a construction easement indicating maybe the passage of heavy machinery or something like that. And there is significant construction on their property according to the drawings of a grain system, which would be permanently installed on their property that would tie in the fleshman creek. And there'd be some concrete structures and we changed the character of that particular piece of property. And, and that's their objection. And so that would be my, my concern is that we clearly define what a construction easement is. It's nothing temporary. It's a permanent, actual part of the construction project itself.
Shall I sign yours here?
Please.
So, yes, there is a storm drain. The storm drain inlet in the underpass does go through the Voyage property and it's into fleshman creek. I'm not sure exactly if that was fully designed in 2014. So I have to look back at my notes and see where we were at with the design process. But a construction easement certainly for doing highway 10 and getting the grades to match the underpass grade would require equipment use on their property, but it would not be disturbed. It would be put back into the same condition it, it was found prior to construction. So I can't imagine Dow and MDT going to the length of designing a storm drain without some communication with the Voyages and making sure that that was a viable design option for draining the underpass. So again, I would be happy to, to look back and, and talk with our design engineer, Tony Beck, who got over to our NMDT and provide clarification on that later.
For the public comment?
Dan, there again, 419 South Yawson Street. Well, I just wanted to, I, I guess I know you're the commission's aware of this, but we do have a contract, a legally binding contract that you wrote, you wrote up, your attorney did. And all the contingencies have been met. So, yes, the consequences to breaking that contract are small, $2,500. And that's the fiscal consequences. But I think there's greater consequences in that it's a legally binding con- contract. So I don't think it's legal for you to break that contract. So your fine is small, but you're still taking an act that's not appropriate of breaking that. If you wanted out of the contract, I think your appropriate path would be to come to me and say, Mr. Durbin, we got more information or there's things we've learned. Would you like to release us from the contract? We mutually agreed to dissolve the contract and that would be a legal option. Or you could fulfill the contract, you don't want the property, sell it. But it's kind of late to sign a contract with me and then just back out because you don't want to anymore. You don't have that contingency written into the contract. You had contingencies for financing, contingencies for appraisals and those things. So I would just question what that would do for the image of the city of Livingston and for the reputation for it. If you do want to build an underpass, you bring me another contract that you want me to sign, I would feel about that as well.
Could you sign? Yeah, take it and go ahead and sign.
I did sign.
We did? Okay, great.
Well, yes.
Mr. Code, you want to address the legal ramifications that he's talking about?
Yes, if we didn't, hey, if we didn't close on the property, we wouldn't be going through with the contract. That is correct. But there is a provision in the contract that contemplates that happening. The penalty is $2,500.
Is there anything else? Can we be sued for that?
Well, I mean, it can be sued for just about anything, but I think that the contract is written in compliance with the law. And I think the penalty is $2,500.
Any other points of clarification for the commission? Ask him if you want to go first?
Yeah.
Okay. I think everyone, this is a, this information that's been provided to us tonight is a little bit of a stunning for this commission as well as administration. The idea of a payback within 10 years if we do not find funding, that is something that, I've been on the commission for six years. I never remember hearing that once whatsoever. The, the city attorney has reviewed the initial memorandum. There was no 10-year limitation or stipulation. The one question that came up, if MDOT is referencing a federal code book called CFR, was there any mention of CFR in the, in our contract?
No, there was not.
This puts, you know, this puts this mission in a very difficult situation as far as, looking at this project, a number of things have changed in this project since we began this project. One major thing that's changed since we started this project was one, when this project was started, the commission moved forward with this project, put it on the ballot, and the voters voted for it to be moved forward based on the information that this was a, the federal monies were a legislative process. And we had some ability to go to our legis, federal legislators and discuss our project and have them put it on their docket for, for funding. That process changed. I don't remember how long ago that changed. It was a number of years ago, two or three years ago? 2011, that process changed, which meant that now this is an administrative prerogative. This goes through the executive branch of the federal government. And not many of us have any first name basis with the president. So that makes it difficult for us and our avenue for obtaining that grant is called a tiger grant. And we have applied for that and we will continue to apply for that. But again, we have no guarantee that we will get that grant. So, you know, this, this puts the decision-making in a whole different light for this project. Do we keep moving forward with the hope that we will get a grant? I mean, I think that's what we've, the past couple of years, I think that's how we've approached this. There's not much I'm sure of. Do you concur with that? Other commissioners?
Can I ask a question? When did the clock start running on this 10-year?
Five years ago. So as far as the administration knows, the only two alternatives we have are general obligation bond. That has to go before the voters or tiger grant. That is the process we have been going through.
Or other grant funding that we're able to secure should it become available through either state infrastructure development programs or other federal infrastructure development programs. But again, it's a matter of seeking that out and seeing what, what this project would fit into for those types of requirements. But those are the mechanisms at this point, yes.
I just want to reiterate that a payback would be a payback of any unused funds from mill levy. Only unused. We don't have to pay back the whole mill levy. I want to clarify that.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. But the, but the full amount of the federal funds that have been distributed to the state on this project.
Correct.
And that the state funds that we set aside for our projects, that would, those could be used in a different project?
They could be, yes. There currently, there's currently approximately, I believe, $1.9 million in an urban fund that is set aside. Right now, it is set aside and designated for the underpass. Those funds, there is a possibility through seeking a waiver, again, there is no guarantee, that those funds could be utilized to repay the 918,000. That that would have to go through a waiver process and again, there's no guarantee of. But otherwise, if that was not the case, that form 1.99 would be available for other investment within other construction programs that met that criteria.
Great. So the, just to, just to clarify again, so that we all have it straight, the, the triggers for a payback would be by the sunset date, not having the funds available. If we decided to abandon the project for any particular reason, or if we decided to abandon the project in lieu of an alternative project, those would all be triggers for payback.
Correct.
And the positives for continuing with this perfect, purchase would be, we do have a, we do have a commitment. We would have tangible asset. We do need the right of way if we do actually move forward with the underpass, so. So those are the positives. Did I miss anything there?
No, you did not.
The only other thing I wanted to comment on is that the process we go, we're going through is a very public process. If you were an individual and you were working with a, with a real estate broker or with a buyer or a seller for a property, you'd have a lot more personal interaction. We don't have that luxury here. We do everything in the public. We don't sit as five members behind a closed door and work with the realtor or a private seller. And so every time we see something, it's at a public meeting. Every time we review something, we have three to four days to review it and to bring ourselves up to speed on the new material and review this. This is a very different process than you go through buying any, any portion of real estate. So the only other thing that I would like to comment on is the appraisal. And just...
Do you want? All of us have a moment to discuss this first.
You want?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, I follow.
One of the, the biggest thing that I have discussed since coming on the commission is this overpass, underpass discussion, which one is better? And I personally have... And I personally have gotten to the point of making a decision based on my information that, or from the information that I've received and feel that we need to move forward with the underpass, which I've been clear about. I think all the commissioners and the whole has been clear about that with different discussions and votes. I think one of my frustrations is we spent a year and a half talking about overpass, underpass after even when we knew that we had to move forward with the underpass. We knew this a long time prior to that we had to move forward with an underpass because that was what the project was called, engineered for and everything. I think, I mean, in a year and a half, I think, I feel like I've spent a lot of time on this and I think we need to move forward. I need, I think we need to, as a commission and as a city, we need to pursue this a lot more aggressively. I don't feel like it has been pursued aggressively in the past year, two years that I've been on the commission. I can't talk for what happened beforehand because I wasn't on the commission. But I feel like it's time we move it forward. We have five years. I believe we can get it done. I believe in the project for the people and for the North Side and for what they need and they want. And I think no matter where it goes, this property, which is a whole other issue to add to it. This property is, will be of value to our city no matter what. I do believe that. How we use it, well, what I want it to be used for is an underpass. And if for some reason it doesn't go to that, I don't think it's going to be a waste of money. I believe we'll use it in a thoughtful way for our community, even if it's a city park or a part of a trail system or a part of a public works building that would help to add services to the North Side. I think there's many things that we could do with this property and its location in particular is, it's very good. So like I said, I feel like we need to be aggressive about our, I mean, on this project and keep it moving and maybe this would be the impetus for that.
Mr. Dergan? Yeah. I asked a question a long time ago, George, that and Steve. Whether it's an underpass or an overpass, we had the underpass well into the design of it. Where's the money comes for the overpass? It is nice to think that we wanted to ask, my first question is, where's the money? I never got an answer on that. So I agree with Drell on this that underpass was passed a long time ago and we've had people that were in original meetings. That's it. Based on what happened now, this is a kind of a sort of outside. But one of the few assets we got is to build it out of this whole thing. So I understand your point. But I think we really where we are right now, we just got to get quicker. Now, we know that to tell you a grant issuer is going to go on early. So that's, that's a good one. And we just pursue whatever avenue we can go. Maybe after the five years, we got a forgiveness. Possibility too, so. But I think, yeah, I think the answer is maybe this has got to go on. It has to go forward. I think Shannon would be good if we got that other piece of information on that. That would be helpful. People will know at the moment, I just want to see. Because if we change, the other part, if we change direction and go over it, we have to start with a tremendous amount of expense all over again. So that just never gets like made, but well, it's not long. Yeah, the new underpass, there's been many comments in the paper, people. The new underpass is not going to be like the old underpass with, and they've learned so much more about this, so. I think where we are at the moment, we go forward. For you?
I do have one last question. Shannon Earlyson, could you try to find out in your research back to Sarah's concern about the voyages and their construction easement? Feedback or statements they made? You know, five, like, how many years ago, whatever, years ago when we first started the process? So five years ago? So I just, I have a hard time believing that the state didn't address that at the time and/or the engineering studies. And, and the first time I heard about the construction easement disagreement like Sarah's referring to is, or was when the underpass, overpass fight came to the table. Which it hadn't been a fight when I wasn't on the commission. I had never heard of anything. I never read the paper. I follow everything in the city. For years I've done it. And I hadn't heard one disagreement about wanting an overpass before I came on the commission. So I want to make sure that we go back a few steps to see what was happening before then as far as the construction easement in particular. We could somehow answer it for me even or for the community.
Certainly, Mr. Williams and I can go through the documentation both of us have and provide you with the answer. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Sabre?
Yeah, I, you know, I guess just my, my closing remarks are, I think there's a discussion of an overpass or underpass being discussed here tonight. What's being discussed is lack of information provided to the commission in making this decision and not communicating with all the parties involved and having a definitive plan to move forward. And we're piecemealing this thing together, hoping everybody's going to do the right thing. And how much further do we want to piecemeal without us having all the players involved moving forward? I'm very concerned if this doesn't happen. I mean, the city's going to go after a new water treatment plant and then you're going to go after them for an underpass. That's a lot of money for this community. Not sure you're going to get those two things passed close to the same time. I'm not sure if we thought about that. So you know, if we had to pay those funds back for, you know, lack of funding probably being the main concern, where's that going to come from? And I would question if you would have to give back the mill levy as well, considering the mill levy was tied to that grant. You would probably have a guess when we look into that, have to give back the mill levy funds as well. So this has nothing to do with Mr. Dergan or I'm just baffled by the chain of events of how all of this is coming to a head. And the lack of other information that seems to have been provided to the commission to make a sound decision moving forward.
Have a comment?
Just you gave a tool for East Callender Street. I find it remarkable that, that at the point in which the debate was whether or not we have an overpass and an underpass, that the city manager, if in fact he knew this, wouldn't use the argument that if we don't go with the underpass, we're going to have to pay back the 900 and so many dollars that never in, I've been attending city commission meetings. I've never heard that once during that debate over pass versus underpass. So I find it remarkable, I think it's a benefit to our community to find out did that information exist somewhere? Because it seems like it wouldn't be utilized, number one. Number two, I have always known since day one that Voyage would not allow for any kind of movement on his property. In fact, they have said, I'm an attorney, I'll take it in Supreme Court. If they go to eminent domain, then that, there is a lawsuit that I will not give up on. So that's always been, that's always been there. This is not an argument for, against the underpass. It's just that that is something that has always loomed in the background and I think was largely ignored. I know that when the underpass, the overpass, people were doing a presentation, they presented Mr. Voyage's letter to the commission, I think you all may recall that, in which he said, yes, I will take this to a court of law. I will not allow this. So, but I, what is such a surprise is this, that nobody knew that this 900 and some dollars would have to be paid back. I find that remarkable. And I find remarkable that it was never used during that period of discussion of overpass versus underpass. I think, I think it's valuable to look into that. And, and clarify further.
Just a quick clarification. Is it possible to get a legal determination on the claim from the state? How, how do, how do we go about getting a legal determination, whether their claim is valid or not?
We would have to work with MDT's attorneys. And, and again, this is something that has come up within the last 10 days. So we're working through that with MDT and I have very open lines of communication with the folks at MDT to resolve this. So that's clearly the next step in, in clarifying. Everything they have provided thus far says it's in 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
I do recall having conversations and I, I probably get it out of my agendas, that I make a lot of notes, but I know we had conversations where we talked about what would happen if we switch gears and move to an overpass and the consequence of that. And I know that was in the past year. And the consequence being, part of it being that if we change, switch gears, we would have to pay back. I do recall that. And I obviously can't remember which meeting it was at, but it has been a part of our conversation. Am I the only one who remembers that? You know, I have all meetings.
And that, that would make sense because the MOU that the city commission approved with MDT did say that if the city abandoned the project, there would be repayment. I think that what takes the city by surprise is the 10 years. We didn't, we weren't aware of that, so we have MDT. That's what it was.
And from what I remember, the city commission applies voter to continue with an underpass. So even though we did have discussions and heated discussions regarding that, the city commission as a whole did keep moving the underpass forward. So. Anyone else have comments? Kind of people who are left off. I was going into the appraisal. Usually when you have you receive an appraisal on a property, you're looking at purchasing, you have a little, you have some time to really review it. I, you know, in this case, I wouldn't say that we'd have a lot of time to review the appraisal just because of the nature of the way we operate as a, as a city commission. It is a multi-page document. I was going to tell you how many pages that it's worth briefly. Yeah, I know it's pretty. And I just finished reading that, reading it this afternoon. And please don't criticize me. I just didn't have a lot of time this weekend to do it. It's probably 30. It's 100 and 117 pages to review. Big document. Granted, a lot of the information is explanations, not so much the review of the appraisal itself. But the appraisal goes through these different valuations. Ultimately, to make it simple, they went through a cost market approach, sales market approach and income market approach. And upon review and finishing really looking at this, you know, I would, I really do question a couple of the approaches here. I question the I'm talking to the commission and to anyone who's interested in this discussion. The sales approach I find is flawed because all the properties that are compared with it on page find it again. Page 116 of the agenda packet. They're all on highway commercial where the property that's being compared to is in a commercial setting, commercial zone, but with smackdown in a residential area. So I find that little I find that that's not a really fair comparison. I find that flawed in comparing this with the property we're, we're looking at. And then I found that the, there was flaws from the income approach because they provided a pro forma type of approach to income, which is not really actual. Meaning there's no actual information there. It's just all guesswork. So even though it's nice guesswork, it's presented really nicely, I find that both of those methods are flawed. The only one that had some value to it was the cost approach, which really doesn't help us that much because what we're interested in is the right of way. And even though there's a building on it, we intend to tear it down at some point when we, when we utilize that right of way. So you know, having just, you know, finished the review today, I find that those, those are things that kind of stick out to me. And then the, the other aspect that sticks out to me just as a commissioner, and we are in a public setting and unfortunately, everything we say is public. Everything we do is public. So now this, this this appraisal report, this 120-page appraisal report is public as well. I have no problem with anyone making a profit. Knew that there was going to be a profit on this property, but I'm not sure if I'm okay with the fact that it's a 100% cost. I'm not sure if this, you know, gets into healthy profit or a little beyond that. I would like the, I'd like the, the, you know, the commission themselves as well. Because I want to hear what you guys have to say about that. We did agree to this. We do have a contract. We will honor this contract. At the same time, I'm a little concerned that when we first got this property to evaluate, it was $480,000 after, after two months of having the property.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
When we first got our offer, it was, it was $480,000 to buy our property. After two months of the owner having the property. After buying it, 127.
So how did you come to the 250? We, we negotiated, both of us sitting down here and got it out at 250. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear what the commission has to say about that.
It's capitalism at work. What can be here? We negotiated a price and regardless of what that person paid for, I mean, that's their business.
Okay. Just wanted to hear what you have to say.
I do have a question regards, I did look at some of the same things you did, James, and I felt a lot of the information in the approval was outdated. A lot of it pertained to Yellstone Park, a lot of it pertained to Callan County. You know, but I guess it was worth its price and weight. I'm not sure how much value it I'm not sure how much of all of the information you received, but feel around question then is, is there a reason why we chose to use an appraiser from Boston as opposed to somebody local?
It was based on availability and list of appraisers that was provided by our bank. This particular individual was well regarded and also available to complete this within the timeframe that we needed.
And I will say, it's a unique property. There's no doubt about that. Stand alone, have you, but the thing that we're more concerned with is the land. Without them, you cannot do the underpass.
Was there any, um, conversation regarding having a right of way and having it, be the impetus for funding or reflection upon the community as people just were funding? Meaning, having gone forward with purchasing the right of way does it reflect possibly in having, in our advance or in the funding process that we keep the project moving forward?
Yes, I believe it provides, um, a favorable overall review of our commitment to this project by continuing to forge ahead and purchase the required right of way, both for any grant applications that we may make as well as if we get, you know, a position where we're receiving an extension of that deadline. I agree that it shows our commitment to this project as well.
Okay. We've had discussion. Is there any other information people want to discuss? Or is there a motion that the commission would like to make?
I just have one question. What was the exact size of the lot? Do you remember? Does anyone know that? Just give me the exact numbers. I know it's in here too.
Is it square footage?
Yeah, or the, I'm wondering.
I think it's point four nine two from my memory.
Almost a half.
So it's almost a half. And can I say something?
Absolutely.
We're doing our best to provide you the information that we can, um, as much as we can. Right now, it's like drinking from a fire hose because none of us were involved in this project until two, three months ago. So if you do have any questions, feel free to ask them, but we're not trying to hide information. We're giving you the information that we have as we get it and as we discover it. So I just want to make that clear that we're not making any effort to fail to disclose either.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion from the commission? Or is there any other further comments? Or is before, uh, we can also have discussion through motion. Maybe a little hard to, um, my subject here, question for the first meeting in line. Don't be, um,
What's the question?
What's the question? Don't be shy about questions because, uh, I think there's, you know, this is, there's a lot of new information tonight that not because it was given before, but because we're just finding out.
That takes you to the next Tuesday, maybe.
Is, um, do, do we want to, there is no motion. Uh, right at the moment, we've had discussion. Is there, is there any action that anyone would like the commission to consider? Mr. Coe?
And just to clarify, what we need here from the commission is the authority for the city manager to close the transaction with Mr. Dergan or Dergan's LLC. So that's, that's what we would need to go through with the closing on that right time.
You have a public comment?
Sure.
Dan Dergan, 418 South Yellowstone. So, um, I guess, I guess my question is, you know, kind of word this appropriately, but just because the, I mean, the lot requires you to fulfill this contract. I mean, not to fill this contract is illegal. Am I, am I wrong about that?
I, well, we would fill the contract. We'll fulfill the contract, but the contract is either signing the contract and closing or paying the penalty.
So you see the penalty as just another avenue to fill the contract as far as fines or breaking the contract?
I believe that's the legal aspects. Am I, am I misunderstanding that?
There are provisions in the contract that require us to go through with closing. If we don't go through with closing, we pay a penalty of twenty five hundred dollars.
And that penalty is in there because if you breach the contract and you end up in court, the judge can look at the contract and say, well, it's as much as I can reward Mr. Dergan is twenty five hundred dollars. Which when I read the contract and I showed it to my advisors, they all said, you might not be able to trust a politician when he says something, but when they give it to you in writing and sign the bottom, you should be able to trust the city license to fulfill a contract that they signed. You shouldn't have to worry about the penalty for them not fulfilling it because you trust our city license to do that. So I guess I'd just ask you to, you know, to consider how that, how that is for the city to act that way or to, it just seems so much more prudent to me to, if you didn't want to follow through with this, to at least come to me.
We can't come to you. We can't, as we make this decision as a body. The only way we can make a decision is in a public setting as we are right now. We can't individually come to you and negotiate with you on behalf of the commission. And we can't have a private meeting with you because it's, everything we do is open to the public. We cannot do that. Every, that's why I brought that up earlier. This whole process is different, a different real estate transaction because, we have to vote as a body, discuss as a body, be in front of the, the community as a body and not hide anything behind closed doors. The only time we can is, is for legal litigation because of the privacy and for the patterns of legality. But none of us can come to you and individually negotiate. I think you probably saw the process we had to go through. There was no time when, except when you're dealing directly with the city manager and we're trying to negotiate a price several months ago. But once it became before the commission, the commission always had to meet in front of the public, your public comments and make the decision as a body. Make a motion, have discussion, make a decision and majority vote. We'd always agree with that. None, none of us individually can, can negotiate with you.
I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah.
Is, um, and the only thing that, that I see that's changed since we, we signed this contract is now you feel more responsible for the million dollars you spent on the property because you might have to take it out of our pockets. It doesn't change the fact that that, that's still, I mean, I don't care if it's federal, state, local dollars. My tax dollars are spent on this property and we're responsible when we spend a million dollars on a project to, to follow it through. But I was saying because the federal government says you might be really responsible. That, that's the only thing that's changed in my, you know, you feel more of that wage of that money. That's always been there.
No, I think, I think the commission has talked the way, I think the, the real key that's changed is the limitation of when that project needs to be finished. That's the real key. That's what this commission just found out, um, this week or tonight. And that's what the administration found out within the last week or two. And that's where, um, you know, we've had to, the administration spent a lot of time trying to figure out how, what are the exact details in which, which we're operating under now? Because this, this changes the urgency in the minds of every commissioner and it also changes the timeframe. And that, it changes, uh, every aspect of how we decide on this project at this point.
Yeah, good idea. One more quick, just to address your, you know, valuation. Don't forget that Darren Rainey also valued the property as a vocalistic agent. He should have been aware of the sale price because if his office had listed for a couple of years at a hundred and fifty or something. So he knew a bit less than that. And I never kept a hundred and twenty seven. I told anybody I asked them how I did the funding people because I didn't want to hide. I'm not ashamed of that profit. I think, I think you shouldn't feel like you're getting gouged. The baby Rocky's got gouged. And I told him I wouldn't pay more than a hundred and twenty five and they said a hundred and twenty seven and I kicked his screen out of that anyway. So, you know, and that's the way negotiation works. And, um, and it wasn't, it was, you know, the appraiser knew that. He still praised it two fifty. Darren Rainey praised it at that. I think you can feel comfortable with that. To say, I mean, the facts in front of you all say two fifty is a fair price.
They, they may say that two fifty looks like a fair price, but I don't agree with all the appraisal either in the, in the way they came about it.
I never liked using appraisal.
I find that a pro forma appraisal is just fluffy guesswork. And that's what most of them do and that's, that's fine. There were three different appraisals, formulas. I thought the only one that had value was the replacement value appraisal. I thought that was, that was good. But the, um, uh, the sales and the market value I felt weren't, weren't that appropriate. If this was my deal and I had to look at this appraisal, I'd feel very uncomfortable personally and publicly. And the, and the moral obligation that we all have is to the taxpayer. You know, and the taxpayer is the one that we have to answer to. We make the wrong decision, I hear about it the next day, probably for a couple of weeks. But I get calls and emails. So the taxpayer is the one who's, who's really paying for this, not me or any of the other commissioners of this particular property. And so we have to feel very confident that we're making the right decision for the taxpayer. So I think that's, you know, that's just the other aspect of it as well.
Thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
So do we have no motion on the floor?
We have no motion so far.
Do we?
Is there, is there anyone want to take out of the side of the box here at all? I mean, there's, there any?
Well, I would like to, um, understand, um, from two commissioners who really want to see this project moving forward, what their hesitation is in improving the, moving forward then.
Yeah.
Commissioner, please.
If we're just dealing with this tonight without any other discussion, probably would pass. So something got in its way, but that, we have to be careful that it doesn't get in the way of passing this money and listen anyway that that comes with the deal. So, uh, there's kind of a couple of separations here. We were all in on this, uh, many weeks ago. And we've gone this far, but then all of a sudden, it's like an avalanche, you know, we get covered over in a bunch of snow. But, uh, I think we just have to look at resolution to make any sense of it. As we go up with all of our, so many different subjects, but I think we just, if we deal with that, so. As I spoke, we even began before, uh, any other information that was an asset that we'd end up with. So that's not the worst thing that we're thinking of at the moment. My, my thanks.
Good question, Sarah. I stated before that I see this as an asset and as a valuable piece of property for the community. I do think it's overpriced. And looking at the, um, the information you received tonight with, uh, that, yeah, they agreed that it was around two fifty, but I still feel that we're overpaying a little bit. And that bugs me. And it bugs me that we were asked that much. So I'm just saying that. I still do value this piece of property and I do think that part of our process to get this overpass done is that we do have to take baby steps sometimes to get to the big picture. To the big, um, project at the end. And this is just one of the baby steps. And I think it is important that we move forward with this and then continue to move forward more aggressively with the other. Which I said this before, I'm so re-stating that again. Yeah. I have no problem making a motion. It's just I wanted to reach out one hundred percent.
Thank you.
I'm wondering out loud, so everyone can hear. And this may be, we have to do everything in public forum. I wouldn't say this to a seller in a public setting ever. Given the light of everything we've come across tonight, not so much what we learned about the 10-year limitation, but, you know, having a real thorough look at the evaluation and the assessment, if the seller would consider renegotiating the selling price with the commission? And if so, would the seller be willing to postpone a closing with that renegotiation in mind? And, um, what, what we can do at this point, uh, since we're struggling with this decision, I think maybe if we took a 10-minute recess till eight o'clock and gave this some thought, took the restroom break, I thought maybe that would give us a little bit of breathing to gather our thoughts. Does anyone have any objection to that? Okay, so we're going to take a 10-minute recess, 15, we'll come back at, uh, 8:05. Okay. So we're going to take a 10 minute recess, 15, we'll come back at, uh, 8:05.
She's going to retweet something there. I'm just going to see if there's. That's why I'm just kind of, because that happened. Yeah, yeah. And I lost two of my dogs. My mother had passed away and I found it twice. Yeah. Oh, so, so it's like, okay, if I found my mom's toys.
I'm not in the court. That's good. It's good because, you know, more you want to box lots of.
If we're at the same height, we're making like this.
Three of you anywhere is a four.
No, it's not. That's not true. That's not true.
Well, it's perceived as a forum, but not necessarily, we're not discussing. We're discussing as well.
And just because we're not yelling together.
That's amazing. I was like, this is so.
Well, thank you a lot. So, and talk to Eric and he's the one that, you know, we, we worked earlier, that's really what it's conversation as well. You know, that we have the right to breathe speech and talk to each other.
If we're standing here, we can, we're standing here with each other talking about something.
Something totally unrelated.
Or when a builder talking about something and understanding your pride doesn't make it more like.
I would say. You're discussing or considering something somewhere or.
Right. But we can be in the same space.
Oh, you can be in the same space.
And.
We're back in session. And we are discussing action item A. City's purchase of property from Durgans LLC and request for authorization to allow city manager to sign necessary voting documents. City Commission, you're on. No, I don't have anything else. Uh, Mr. Girgin, if you, if you have any thoughts that you like today, I, I offered a suggestion. If there's no response from you, that's fine.
Um, I might respond then.
Sure. Sorry, we have to negotiate or talk about this in public, which is our rules.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. And you're a good one, ancient South Yelts. Yeah, no, I, I think I've bought and sold enough lots in the north side and I have a good feel for the north side of town. And I see it growing very fast. My treehouse is about full. It's going to be pretty quick. And building out to our Discovery Vista. And I understand this property, there's not a lot of commercial properties serving all those homes. There's a lot of businessmen I know that I've talked to before. When this all started out, I was, I was under the impression of mostly telling that we talked about it in our past forever and we'll talk about it forever. So I said, let's make good use of that property. I was going to build on it. I came and talked to Ed and I thought, you know, I shouldn't build until I talk to Ed and see if he'd rather have the property, give him that option. But I know insurance agents, therapists, accountants, all kinds of small businesses like that, that would do very well on that side of town. It feels like a long ways to drive from Northern Lights anywhere else in town. And coffee shop, and there's so many things that would like to be there. And I'm very confident at eight lots. I know it's only half an acre, but it's eight separate commercial lots. And I've talked to enough people and I feel like I could sell me for 50,000. I'm very confident of that. Eight lots at 50,000 each is $400,000 for me. That's how I came up with the 480. I said the building's worth 80 on top of that. I might be wrong, but if I'm off by, say I'm off by 20%, I can only get 40,000 each. Eight lots at 40,000 is still $320,000. And I, I just know I can sell them for that. And that, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I feel very confident in that. So I feel like I'm doing the city a pretty good favor at 250. And I just think, I think every time I went through your underpass and I sold it to you cheaper at 250, I feel like an idiot. So I just can't do that to my kids. I can't take that money out of their, you know, out of their pockets. And I feel like, and I, I understand from your, from your perspective, it's an old building on a half an acre that nobody's used for years and years and years. And I can see it from that perspective and I understand and I appreciate your, as a taxpayer, I appreciate your strong desire to not waste any money that you don't have to. I really appreciate that, but, um, I'm a, I'm a visionary. I develop. That's what I do. I love it. And when I see it, I see a bright future for the property and so, so no, 250s is, that's how I would do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you for, uh, uh, showing us. Here, Commissioner is ready and willing to make a motion. City manager. Time to closing documents. Motion by Freeman.
On second.
Second by Holman. Right? Further discussion, questions, clarifications or public comment? Or shall we just move to the vote? Public comment. Mission comment. Oh.
Chairman Prisament.
Yes.
Commissioner Holman, yes. Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioners Saber.
No.
Motion passes. Next, uh, action item is discuss, approve, deny election of Livingston City Commission Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. So this again is a forum in which we take nominations. So, um, so we'll take nominations for them for. So first of all, nominations for chairperson.
I'll, I'll make a motion. We keep saying, so just really are James Bennett, chairman, Chair, Commissioner Holman was vice chair.
Are there, are there motions on the floor?
I'll second that.
This motion is second. Further nominations on the floor. Okay, only heard one nomination. With that motion is second, maybe we have roll call? Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saber.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, our next discussion item is, um, uh, thus to discuss, approve, deny chairperson's appointment of city commissioners to advisory boards and commissions. Now, um, that's what it says in our ordinances. Uh, there are certain, um, committees that the chairperson's supposed to select and the mission to approve. But what we have traditionally done it here is that we take, uh, we discuss each committee and find out who's interested in being on what. So we do have a list. Did everyone get the list?
Yep.
Of committees? Okay. So, um, and Mr. Coe, if you just follow us with this, I'd appreciate it. Just only just to make sure that we are, when, when I see these as being vacant, are they vacant from needing an appointment from the community or vacant needing an appointment from the commission?
Vacant from the commission.
So these are, these are different committees that, uh, the committee, uh, the, uh, the commission needs to be on these.
Correct.
Do we have, we actually have a seat on the urban renewal? I thought that was, um, purely, um, according to urban renewal statutes? One of the commissions sits on that one?
Yes, do or may. May I comment?
Yes.
In addition to that, you have been contacted by the commission.
Did everyone hear that?
No.
Oh. What she said was that the urban renewal has requested that a commissioner sit at the meetings as well. Uh, wait, can you wait on that one till we get to that? You want to comment on the urban renewal, right? Okay. Okay. So I was just clarifying that because that was the way that we all.
James, can I ask clarification on vacancy to them?
Of the what?
To piggyback on your vacancy question?
Sure.
Um, the fact that with all these vacant, does that mean the commission has never assigned persons to these boards? Is that why they're vacant now?
I do not know if they have never been filled. I just know they are currently not filled. I, I don't know what date all of these committees have different dates in which, different cycles in which they appoint. So I don't know how long each of these has been vacant.
And I guess, I guess my follow-up question is, is, um, if, obviously not all times will work for all commissioners. So if, what, what happens if you can't find a commissioner that can meet the timeline of a specific board? And so the position remains vacant?
So what, like with the urban renewal agency, each one of those boards should have their own bylaws that would count for that, account for that contingency in the event that you couldn't fill it with a commissioner. Uh, I'm not familiar with the bylaws of each and every one of these vacancies or these boards on which there's vacancy. But I would hope that there's an avenue in those bylaws to, uh, fill that seat that the commissioner can't sit on. I'm not, I'm not certain. But I, I would imagine the bylaws call for that, that, that situation, how to remedy that.
I don't, on some of these boards, I don't ever remember us having a seat on those boards. Library board. Yeah, we never. Historical preservation board.
Never talked about that. That's a good idea.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the idea. It's just that we haven't done before.
Did you, did you come up with this list?
I came up with this list, um, per, like the website has currently. And it may, it may not be completely accurate either. And I put vacant on some of these boards. I was not able to go through all the bylaws in each of these. And we don't actually have bylaws for each of these committees. But if there was no commissioner sitting on.
You put a vacant.
Then I put vacant.
Okay, okay.
And it's specified commissioners.
No, it didn't necessarily specify that.
All right. Cause I think some of these vacant ones, I don't, you know, we're having a commissioner sit on.
So why don't we just handle it this way? The ones that you know you've been, that have had a commissioner in the past, we'll do those. I'll do the research to see if the other ones require a commissioner and come back and take those up at the next meeting.
But you are saying that the urban renewal has requested. Okay. Patricia, you want to comment on the urban renewal?
Yes. Understand the urban renewal is more frustration in trying to get someone on the board. Cause that seat has been vacant for some time. When I was on the commission, I wanted to be on the urban renewal board. And the city attorney told me I could not. And so I went, I attended all the meetings as an observer, but I was never allowed to vote on the board. So that was challenged legally, uh, when I was on the commission. And the decision was made that I And the decision was made that I, that legally I would not be able to be on the board. Um, I did make the decision that if I was not appointed to the city commission tonight, that I would love to apply to be on the urban renewal board. So there, you have one applicant to fill that spot of the urban renewal board. And I just talked to the city manager, I can, I will get the application in tomorrow morning. But it has been challenged. The respector made that decision on that. And so, um, whatever legal grounds he found.
Do you remember his reasoning? Was that conflict of interest of some sort?
There was a conflict within the bylaws of urban renewal that, and the city commissioner could not be on the board. And there never has been in the last sixteen years, or ever since urban renewal began, there's never been a city commissioner on that board.
Right now.
Thank you very much, Patricia.
Yeah.
It happened to us like in that state.
All right, so, um, in my mind, I think there's a question on, first of all, the Board of Appeals. Jim, aren't you, don't you sit on that?
Does it just say Board of Appeals or is it say Board of Just?
Well, there's, there's two different committees. Board of Appeals.
It's more building code and that is not ever city commissioners.
That's the Board of Appeals?
Correct.
Okay.
Board of Just is the same. Those are volunteer citizens.
Okay.
And that's because they actually, they're a quasi judicial board that the city commission is separate from.
I seem to remember my, my first year that, uh, that Steve Caldwell and Bill Stannering were on the Board of Just. They were planning board, actually. That was the planning board. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
While you're there, the Historic Preservation Board, they never had a city commissioner.
It is not, in fact, by ordinance, it's got a specific membership that doesn't include city.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Cross that.
All right. All right, the job's getting a little easier now. Okay. I was dividing those up and going, wow, that's gonna be something. All right, so why don't we start with the tree board? Uh, meets as necessary, third Friday afternoon. Third Friday every month?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Freeman, you're on that, that's mine?
Yeah, I'll just stay here.
Have you liked staying there? Is your, now we can have up to two, two commissioners on a board. So is there anyone else who'd like to be on, on the tree board? Are you looking to have more of a motion? Tell me.
Uh, I'm just, uh, Kathy Mill wants to keep throwing it. I'm all in favor of that.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, Mel Freeman for the, uh, tree board. No objections?
No objections.
Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, next, we have Parks and Trails Committee meets fourth Wednesday every month at six thirty P M. Commissioner Holman is, uh, on that commission, uh, on that meeting committee. Do you still want to be on that committee?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And I, my, maybe my have to give some feedback on it too. But I recall that we talked a lot about this in the past, that there doesn't have to be two commissioners on.
Right.
Even though there were two commissioners. And really Adam was, um, he was the treasurer or the secretary. But yet he wasn't really officially a commission member. So that makes it look like there's two commissioners. But there doesn't have to be.
All right, so you all know a commissioner on there?
Well, I'm just saying you don't have to.
Don't.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, any objections? Okay. That's one of them. Making good progress. Okay, Commissioner Holman on Parks and Trail, uh, historical, no. Library board, I'm assuming is the same thing?
It's a no.
That's a no?
Yeah, that's one we can also research.
Okay, good.
Right back. Or updating.
Okay, skate park, this is the one I have some question on for myself. Is that, did that committee meet with you on Monday?
Yes.
To Derek?
Yes. Yes, that committee met with, um, Shannon Holmes, I believe, Matt, and Melanie Montgomery.
Okay. But I'm interested in finding out, did they indicate at all? I know that they, um, they have a nonprofit status now for their fundraising, for their, their permanent skate park. Did they mention anything about, um, being separate from the city?
As I was not able to attend that meeting, I'll ask Mr. Holmes to step up.
Unfortunately, we didn't talk about the nonprofits' status in a lot of detail. We were, there were more discussions on, um, the actual location and construction requirements, um, for moving forward, um, with doing that. So I apologize, but I know Derek, um, did say that they have their status now, the three oh one. And there was no mention that the city would be the partnership on that.
Okay. Well, I'll try to clarify that for the next meeting. And, uh, is there anyone who wants to volunteer for the skate park? Like me? Wow, what a real confidence. Okay.
Let's get, let's get part things are.
Your skate parties are over, okay?
Give it up for us.
Okay, moving on, uh, no, urban renewal, no airport board for sure. Okay, Mel, you're on the city county building maintenance.
Yeah.
True.
It's every week.
Uh, we did once, uh, about two years ago. No stairs there.
Oh, so do you want to volunteer for that? Mel, off, does someone else want to volunteer?
What it was, I, I advised the county and shake that sort of building. Since that would make me late. So I worked with that. I worked with the county commissioner. I'm available for that.
All right, does anyone want to do the health board? I was.
Do you not?
I'm, I'm looking to, uh.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you mention if ones you don't want to do or looking to?
Yeah, I don't want to do that one. What I'm really interested in is not that, not that we can spend more time over another city wish. I'm interested in being on the planning board this time. I've never been on the planning board.
What's the health board?
We have, you can still. The health board means.
It's every three months.
Every three months, second Tuesday at seven P M. And, uh, they basically, uh, go over health issues, sanitation issues, not only within the city, but on the county. The road health issues, whether someone's going to get septic system or, um, you know, what a fine might be for a violation of sanitation codes. They also talk about the, um, animal control.
Um, media, your duties.
Okay.
Oh, there you mentioned him.
All right.
That's all about the subject. That's about me.
I know that, that really piqued you up. I saw you, I saw you, you got a little excited. All right, planning board, Mr. Holman, I'm assuming you'd like to stay there?
Yes.
Okay, Jim. There is a question on the membership of the planning board that I need to have as the attorney of research. We've had in the past two commissioners on there. The state statute is specific to one. It is my reading. Okay. So that, that may be overturned by Mr. Coe's legal research, but I would prefer you to, to hold off and tell me to do that. Okay. We'll give you an okay.
And the time has changed on that. That's why I said it's on, and it's at five.
Five, five, on Wednesday.
On Wednesday. On that.
Thank you, Jim. Yes.
Third Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, um, Commissioner Schwartz, Schwartz. I, I haven't seen you on any board yet, so.
I'll, I'll do communications.
Okay, that, that's a good one because it never meets.
Yeah, just monthly and there's no time to say.
Okay, emergency medical services, that's another one that doesn't meet that often, doesn't Mel?
Uh, absolutely not. Not that. But I'm available.
It's a deal, okay. Okay. Moving on, Urban Transport, Transportation Committee, uh, Mr. Bennett and. I like that one. That's a good one. Anyone want to be on it too? Huh? Uh, we meet quarterly with, uh, M D O T. People who just gave us the bombshell. And, uh, they tell, talks about, um, all the different, uh, stream and sidewalk and bridges, projects going on in Livingston and Park County. So you get an update from their past. You know, all about it. I'll stay on that one. That was a good one.
I'd like to be on a couple of times.
Yeah, let's have a strange time in the whole day.
I could do that.
Do I do that one as well? Okay. Okay, and Sister City, we know that Commissioner Freeman will want to stay on that, but he loves that one.
That's a good one.
That's a good one. Okay. Does anyone else want to be on that?
I would.
You would? Okay. So are you sure this is all committees? This is it?
Lisa, I, I, no, I've asked a question, I guess Mel would be here. We, we used to sit on a grant, uh, grant meetings. I just wonder if that's going to resurrect today.
It, it will certainly resurrect, probably in the next quarter.
That meeting's committee. Your statute that will be one city commissioner on that one?
Used to be two of us.
I don't believe so. No, welcome to.
Well, let me know. Okay, so let's have this, uh, we're doing pretty good. Mr. Freeman has one, two, three, four. You can handle those four?
Absolutely.
We already went through this.
Okay. All right. Who's your question?
Call for question. Is that Robert Switzer?
We have no question after the call. And you're okay with, uh, being on the committees you are just two right now? That'd be good, good start for you. Same with you, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're done. Okay, moving on to action item D. Oh, this is easy. Okay, everyone stands up. Everyone like where you're sitting?
I was very.
Okay. We don't need a motion. We want to move with that. Okay. City manager comments.
We have one more.
Oh, yes, thank you. Here we go. Action item E, addendum, discuss, approve, deny appointment of Jim Maston as interim fire chief. And Livingston Fire Rescue beginning February sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, and ending when Suma Chief assumes the duties. Ms. Loy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As, as most of you are aware, Chief Kaufman, um, has tendered his resignation to relocate back to Virginia, thus creating an interim vacancy while we fill for the permanent fire chief position. Um, Jim Maston, who is a longtime former fire chief of Livingston Fire Rescue and also served as an interim public works director for us prior to Shannon Holmes joining, um, has graciously agreed to come back, um, and be our interim fire chief. Beginning February sixteenth, he will actually be, uh, boots on the ground, um, here March seventh with you approved the interim appointment. Director, EMS director Captain Kevin Harrington will be serving as a command and tactical, operational and tactical command, um, for that interim period. Chief Maston's advice until the chief is actually here again if you approve. So. We, um, I will be requesting a special session for purposes of appointing the new fire chief to begin, um, on June one. A request that meeting to be immediately prior to our next city commission meeting on the sixteenth to give you all an opportunity to meet him and meet the statutory requirement, um, which requires that a commission vote approve the permanent fire chief. Thank you.
Any other points, clarification from the commission? Roll call? There are none? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the, uh, assignment of Jim Maston as interim fire chief.
Okay, motion by Freeman, second by Holman. Roll call?
Chair President.
Yes.
Commissioner Holman. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Saber.
Yes.
Motion passes. City manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to piggyback off the, um, prior action item, I'd like to offer my deepest thanks to Chief Kaufman for his service. We are certainly going to miss him deeply in this community. So thank you, chief. And that's it.
Thank you very much. All right, city commission pause. Commissioner Saber.
Um, update on the city manager, searching where we are on that?
Sure. Um, I received probably ten applications on Sunday, which was the deadline. Um, I believe my, not my running in the last minute. Um, I believe that brings the count somewhere in the, in the low sixties for applications actually received. Um, I sent out communication, my plan is to actually, um, work from home on Thursday to prepare packets for all of you with, um, the candidates that meet the minimum qualifications. Um, in the interest of sparing, um, numerous trees in the rainforest, I will keep a full copy of all applicants available for anyone's review, but probably will not forward each of you individualized packets that include folks that don't meet the basic requirements. Um, we did have one applicant who I would consider, um, an exceptional applicant, uh, off in California, who opted to bow out on because of the statutory requirement that the city manager reside within the immediate city limits of Livingston. He and his wife are already on property, um, town off of Mill Creek. Um, so still within Livingston, but not within the city limits. And that ordinance would, um, prevent him from, from being the city manager as of current standards. So, um, he, he did opt to bow out, but it would have been, I, I think, healthy, obedient, if not being needed here. So just to make it clear, certain, certain things that have come up in consideration in the process.
And so what, what's the timeline then? So we will receive those applicants and then what happens?
Um, then it will be, um, up to the five of you to determine who we would like to do initial interviews with. Generally speaking, we've done phone interviews for leadership team members. That would be with one or two of you. Um, unless we did it in a special session. I mean, we could do it in a special session as well. Agreed upon questions, criteria, do an initial phone interview. Then, um, from that initial cut, make a finalist, um, recommendations around who finalists would be. And then we would be in the process of, um, bringing them here, um, for an in-person interview with all of you. At this point, there are no local applicants that are qualified. So there will be, um, travel expense, hotel travel, car rentals, and all of that for any of the applicants that we decide to move forward with.
And an estimated amount of time, do you think that the commission can accomplish this?
That, that is really a.
Couple months, uh?
I, I mean, I would say to have, um, to have a finalist decision when you count an initial interview process, um, coordinating schedules to bring people. here, travel arrangements, all, you know, your schedules. I would say probably two to three months is realistic for having someone have an offer and accept. And then it would be, just knowing what the pool looks like right now, when you're looking at the location. So I think realistically, three to four, if not five months out, to have it completely finalized with a person in the chair.
Thank you. Just kind of thinking about that one applicant. How, how, what's the, not promoting or suggesting that we do this, but just trying to understand how those type of criteria change? What would be the process to have that language changed?
Do we need to amend the ordinance?
Okay.
To, you know, to whatever limitation you would like to provide, whether that be within a certain mile amount of the city limits.
Is there a mile amount now?
No, it is within the city limits. It's not, so I thought it was a... The city manager by ordinance must reside in the city limits themselves. Our EMS and fire and police personnel, the requirement is 15 to 20 minutes depending on weather. So they can live in the valley provided they can be here within 15 to 20 minutes in this building.
So a county commissioner, like Steve Vogel, lives in a city, it can be a county. It goes by precincts or districts or something?
Well, he lives in the county.
City's part of the county.
Yeah, he lives in the district, but he represents the county district.
Yeah, and then he's a city.
Yeah, but it's part of the county.
And then just a couple of other things, just curious. None of, well, two of these not pressing issues, but if, perhaps we could add a future meeting, have a 10 or 15 minute presentation on, one of the issues would be the Sister City program and what exactly the city's wall is and how it supports the program. I don't believe we really provide any funding. Has that been discussed before? But just a, it's a very important program. And I would just like to see outlined what the city's participation is and maybe some ideas of what we could do to perhaps any aspect.
Sure. Chairman Bennett has requested that each of the committees provide updates to the commission on a cyclical basis. I could certainly arrange for Sister Cities to be one of, one of the first in that process.
Right. And then I know that we have a new grant writer who I had the pleasure of meeting over the holidays. And I was just curious if at some point in our packets or in a presentation, it doesn't matter, just a informational of what grant, what, what project she happens to be working on, what grant she may be working on. Could be similar, just to like the report the police chief provides of...
Certainly.
Just so we have an idea of where the direction is headed, looking for funds.
Sure. Prior to my appointment as the interim city manager, the AST team did provide a monthly report. That's something that hasn't been on my radar in the last few months. So we can certainly get that report reinstated back to the commission in a presentation at a future meeting. Probably the first meeting in March, if that would be.
Whatever the rest of the commission thinks. I just, I do know we're going to be coming up against asking the public for a lot of money and it would be good opportunity to start looking to see what's available out there.
Certainly.
And then my last one, it's more just of a question. Not having been through the budget process before, do we do a, a budget workshop at all? Oh, do we?
Yes. We do many. And it is, it is a long, very detail orientated process. We begin with the CIP, capital improvement budget. Once we have that finalized, we're in, in the last stages of that currently. And then we go over the entire budget in its entirety after the capital piece. So there are many meetings to come.
And so are those, those meetings commissioners are attending?
Commissioners and all of them.
Okay. And just what time are those usually scheduled?
Evening.
They are in the evening. Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you for the trust that you've placed with me and voted me on the commission. It's an honor and I'm forward serving you and the city of Livingston. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman? We, we need you on the county tomorrow.
No, that meeting was postponed due to, we two, two of the county commissioners are away. So it was postponed to next, the 10th. Same time. Same, same time, same place, just...
Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner, what would...
I know we have talked about this before and I feel like I'm still waiting for the answers and I know it was transitional. So I want to state that again and that is how, the question about how we are, we are following through or practicing fire treatment and ordinance and how we treat community when it comes to ordinances or breaking in ordinance. I would like that to be updated and I know it's part of something I was going to talk to you more about one-on-one. But I would like to be able to bring some information either here to the commission or have you guys bring it to us.
I think we're just going to look at together, Fred? So we could go through that in a minute. Some more detail and develop plans that we bring to the commission.
Okay. All right, and then the second part is, as someone on the planning board, we have been working since I got on the board. I, we've worked pretty much every meeting on our growth policy. On occasion, we work on things in addition to it, but we are way behind the process and I just want to update the community and that it's been a struggle because it's, you know, a volunteer board making decisions or writing a document that is pretty intense, as we all know. And so we're working hard on it and we have some, some plans to bring to the community and to the commission on how to deal with it in the future. And I just wanted to actually state that for the planning board and for the community that it, we're working. The growth policy is an important part of our community and having a good one is extremely important. And we're working towards it, but like I said, it's a volunteer board struggling to get it done. So we hope you have some options coming up. Welcome, Quentin, to our ranks.
Are you considering growth policy? Just question for the commission.
Yeah, well, we're pre-writing a couple of... Or adding.
And that will be a public...
Yeah, well, then either, and then this will be brought to the commission in its entirety when it's done. Want to welcome Quentin to our ranks. And I did have a question on the, let's see, I asked a question on the hiring process. So the hope is to, for the city managers to have us review a larger, a, a number of applicants and then try...
Try to reduce.
Reduce, but us doing that as well with you.
Yes, okay.
All right.
That might be my preference. This is Lord Meyer.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. I said, I wasn't sure if you were, like, with the fire chief, how we have one person come to us. This is a bigger process.
Yes, much.
Much bigger.
Yes.
Plus it is the one person that we need to hire. I'm sorry, did I miss a date when you thought you might have those to us? Was this like next meeting? Is that what you were thinking?
My, my goal is to go through all of the applicants, rank them, select a top 15, top 10, and have packets to all of you probably in advance of the next meeting for your review. And if we're going to discuss and review those applicants, at this point, there's still an expectation of privacy for these folks who have applied. I have no way of determining if they have let current employers know that they're searching. Some specifically says, do not call my current employer. So if, if we want to have a sit-down with, an exchange of ideas about those, and discussion about those applicants, we can do that in the executive session.
Great. Thank you very much.
Well, we have that discussion during the meeting and what we have a special meeting just to discuss applicants. I'm thinking of one at a time, is where I'm coming from.
I would suggest a separate meeting. We'll be discussing the fire chief early before the next meeting. So I would say just in deference to everything going on, probably a separate meeting would be best. And we can certainly work that around, on all of your schedules and that way.
Just something to put on your calendars, February 24th. If you don't have it, that's the, the date for the city and the county getting together and reviewing and listening to the presentations from all our partners who provide us with economic development services in cities and to Park County. And that would include the Warden Robby's Economic Development District, Bosspera, MSU Extension. And I believe that maybe there's job services maybe. At least those three. I believe that's at 5 o'clock. Do you remember, Lisa?
Is that the show that they want to be showing?
Yes.
I think it's at 4 or 5.
No, I don't think it's at 4. I think it's at...
We've got an update today. We came, the time was wrong.
We can get, I can confirm that any mail that I
Okay.
To everyone tomorrow, it was 6:30 would be okay. And then it's at attention big letters. Time is incorrect. We'll confirm for sure to get that, too.
But it is the 24th. So I think, I think as many commissioners can be there as possible, it would be great because what, one of our goals is to make sure that those, which are working well together so that we're not stumbling or stepping on anyone's feet of their strengths of being, work well with city and the projects that they have that they might work synergistic with. We want to make sure they do so that, so that prospects and others of economic development programs or activities that we do in the city are well working.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
When I get that information to you, if you all could confirm to me whether or not you are planning on attending? Because if one or two of you are attending, then you can publicly announce that on your behalf.
I think you can publicly announce it anyway. I think, I think so, yeah. So again, I want to thank the staff of the administration for doing a great job keeping the city going, city running in our, in all of our intern situations. And so just, you know, I think the commission really appreciates that. So thanks very much. Thank you, Quentin, for applying. I hope we, I hope we got a little bit of fun tonight. I think that's it. Is there any public comment? Yes?
Just grateful to a 40 scale industry. First of all, I want to thank you for the fairness and the way you handled the interviews to, for the city manager position and very much for considering me and my family's very, probably very happy that you did. Excuse me. I, I want to admonish you as you move forward. Have you been to the selection of a city manager before? There are a couple of things that we learned that I think are very important to emphasize and emphasize. Number one, if in the first round of interviews you don't find the person that you feel completely comfortable with, then go to a second round. It's, it's not that hard. It is worth it. And the time you spend is, is going to benefit the community. Number two, and I cannot say this email, vet, get a professional person to do the vetting of the candidates. Because anybody can apply and they can say, I've had this job and that was wonderful and things were hunky-ducky. And in fact, it may not be so. And professional matters are the ones that can screen it. It is not, it is grateful even if such a wonderful leadership team, but it is not the leadership team that can vet these people. People who are professionals in this area know what to look, look for. And so please consider, it's not that much more to hire someone to, a professional to do the vetting of your final candidates. Number three, is very important. Now, when we selected the city manager before, we didn't have a leadership team. But it is almost a conflict of interest for a leadership team to do this final screening or to be the group that makes, just any decisions, our city manager. It is you. You are the ones who should be doing all the final interviews. There should be nobody who is not present at those final interviews. It is your decision. And so it is not something you can delegate to anybody else because there is a conflict of interest. If you do, you're the ones. So it is an encouragement that I have that when it comes to screening, it may take more time, it may take more noticed meetings, but it is to this community's advantage for you to be the ones who do all the screening, who do all the interviewing. Not the initial whether or not they're qualified, but beyond whether or not they're qualified, it is up to you to make those decisions. And it is in our community, I think, for the best interest to, to do so. So I just wanted to say what we learned. And especially, don't be afraid of extending in a couple of months or don't be afraid of going back out. So I just think it's really such an important decision. It could be a decision you made the last nine years. So at this end of line, those three things, I think, are very, very important. Thank you so much and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Patricia. Other public comment? Public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for a term.
So moved.
For a second. You want a favor? Motion is adjourned for the... Blah, blah, blah. The meeting is adjourned. Right, 52. This meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-two. It's probably too long. Hey, Liz. Hey, Liz. It is clear.